Okay, we're ready. Ready. Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. My name is Debbie Homewood. I serve as Chairman on the Board. A quorum is present and the meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as followed. Public hearings will be opened. Can we have any public hearings? Will be opened by reading the legal notice and the record. The applicant will have the opportunity to make their presentation to the Board. The Board members may ask questions of the applicant. Once the Board has concluded its questioning, I will open the hearing to public comment. All members of the public in attendance who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Once recognized, please state your name and address for the record and speak loudly for all to hear. All questions and comments must be directed to the Chair. And I'll call on Board members or the applicant as needed to respond. Quick reminder, as we begin, we request the participants in this evening's meeting to remain respectful, Board members, applicants, staff. Please be conscious, concise in your comments and presentations to ensure sufficient time is available for others to comment on the Board. Please turn your cellphones to silence. And refrain from side conversations so that all the participants in the meetings can hear. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is 147 Dean Street, N.A.N.R. Mr. Hearn.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. The record David Hearn Jr., Gallimette Corral at 38th Road Street here in Norwood. What is before you is an approval not required plan and I'd like to briefly explain what's going on here. I represent folks who own number 163 Dean Street and a vacant lot to the east of that. If you were looking at the processes from Dean Street, the vacant lot would be to the left of 163. The property of 147 Dean Street is owned by another entity unrelated to us and we have entered into an agreement to purchase 169 square feet from the 147 Dean Street property. That parcel A, 169 square feet, is shown on the plan running along the easterly side of 147. That will be added to the 163 Dean Street property and then we are going to transfer from the 163 Dean Street property to the vacant parcel in a piece of land, a parcel having a, let me look at the number again if I may, 65.25 square feet. And so the, we are numbering on this plan, 147 as Lot 1, 163 Dean Street as Lot 2A because it's the second lot and we'll have parcel A added to it. And then the third one, the vacant lot, is Lot 3B and that is the third lot and we're adding parcel B to that. This is done to create some compliance with respective zoning, the zoning bylaws, dimensional regulations and requirements so that each 163 Dean Street and the vacant lot will have at least 15,000 square feet of land within the general residence district. As those parcels now exist, they have land in excess of 20,000 square feet, but part of the land is within the manufacturing district and we're trying to get 15,000 square feet within the general residence district. So this accomplishes that. It doesn't do any damage to the zoning status of Lot 1 at number 147 Dean Street. So we have already filed the consents of the owner at 147 and my client has signed the consent for this matter to proceed. So not so much a land swap, but a land acquisition from 147 to 163 and then a small portion of the 163 being carved off and added to the vacant lot. There is a note at the bottom of the plan that hopefully describes relatively clearly what we are doing.
Okay, that's it?
I just have a question.
Mr. Chairman?
When I'm looking here, I see 143 and I see 147 and then I see 165. Where is 163?
163 is the house right there. If I may. We're dealing with 140, we're taking land off of 147. That's 163 and that's the vacant lot. So this is the parcel being purchased and we are adding 169 square feet total to this. There is a zone line between manufacturing and residential and then we're transferring 65.25 feet to this lot. It's difficult to show it, but the detail is here.
Is it very narrow?
Very narrow. It's .28 feet, I think.
Really?
The, that transfer.
Point two, yeah, .29. Okay.
Well, 0.29, I guess, but that's what we're accomplishing here, we hope.
Okay. Questions?
How does one get to 165 from 163 from Dean Street? Or is there?
165, oh, I'm sorry. That's not connected with us. That's part of the gas company property and they have ways in. I don't know if there's a driveway. A couple of doors down, I think there's a driveway that goes around back to some industrial buildings in back of all these parcels. If you went down toward Route 1, there's, there's a way in there. I think Peschowski's nodding to that also.
So it's not landlocked?
No.
Okay.
No, that's not part of this and if it were, it'd be their problem, not ours.
Okay. But it's still on Dean Street. That's what really matters. Anybody else? Brian?
Good.
Brian?
Good.
Somebody want to make a motion? It's an A and I.
Okay.
I can't make a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to endorse the plan as presented.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The call is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you.
If you can sign us after the meeting.
Yeah, maybe you can buy them all up.
Is that what you want?
That'd be good. If you can sign a couple of extra copies.
I brought the whole roll that you brought.
At least one for, one paper, one for me in addition to the Mylar and then whatever you need for your files and the building department or anybody else. That'd be fine. I'll check in with you.
I won't let anybody leave until they sign those tonight.
Do I have to wait?
No.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night, thank you. Okay. How about Karen? Who's our clerk?
It's continued, isn't it?
Ernie?
What?
Your other clerk? You read the public notice for 111 Moore Street?
Notice. I didn't think I saw it. I do not have a copy of the notice in the plan. Hope you got one. Okay. Thank you. Notice is here by giving that the Planning Board of the town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on June 16, 2025 at 7:00 PM regarding property located at 111 Moore Street. Map 15, Block 12A, Lot 7, Norwood, Mass. 02062 in the manufacturing district M. The hearing will be held at Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062. It will be available for remote participation via Google Meet. The application requests a major project special permit pursuant to the general laws of Commonwealth of Massachusetts and zoning board, zoning bylaw, Section 7.4, to expand an existing warehouse facility which will increase space by more than 25,000 square feet. The Board will also review proposed amendments to the previously approved site plan pursuant to Section 1025. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the Board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the Board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Planning Board and may be requested by emailing COMD E V at norwoodma.gov or by calling 781-762-1240, extension 6064, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Yes, sir?
Thank you, members of the Board. My name is Matt Smith. I'm an engineer with Norwood Engineering Company and we're here to request that you approve our site plan to expand the warehouse located at 111 Moore Street in Norwood, Mass. I'm here representing Ernie Bach, who is the CEO of Subaru of New England and I'd like to introduce the people that are with me also tonight to make presentations. We have Mr. Michael Clemmie, Vice President, Purchasing and Property Management for Subaru of New England, Tim Toomey, the Construction Manager for Subaru New England, and we have two of the members of the architect team. We have Brendan Powers, Senior Project Architect for CI Design, and we also have Ali Salimian. He is the landscape architect also with CI Design. And I have Alex Kraplin with me, another engineer from Norwood Engineering Company. What I'd like to do as far as the presentation is I would like to talk a little bit about the site itself and how the operations work. Then I'd like to talk about the site plan and key mainly on the stormwater management that we've designed for you. And then I'd like to ask Brendan Powers to come up and give an explanation of the design of the building with some facades, facades, and then Ali will come up and do the landscape, explain the landscaping design that we've done. So if it's all right that I proceed in that way, I'd like to go ahead. Okay, thank you. So this is the Subaru of New England warehouse. It's located on Moore Street and Pleasant Street. The existing building is right here. The existing building is about 130,000 square feet and we're proposing 94,000 square feet on the Pleasant Street end of the, of the This is our existing conditions. The building is in blue. Basically, as far as the site planning, everything from here to the left is going to change. And as you can see, currently there are one, two, three, four, I'm sorry, one, two, three driveways on Moore Street and two driveways on Pleasant Street. When I show you the proposed design, we are eliminating one of the Moore Street driveways and one of the Pleasant Street driveways. So we're reducing the number of driveways by two. Currently what happens is the, is the trucks come in Moore Street, they go to here into a group of truck docks that are going to remain. Now, right now, in the morning, they accept deliveries at this truck dock and then the afternoon, late afternoon, the trucks leave, they get loaded, they leave, and they go out to different dealerships for Subaru of New England. Currently, they have 65 customers or dealerships that they will deliver to all around New England and that is not going to change. So we're not adding any, any customers at all. That's, the operation is going to be the same as far as who they deliver to and, and where they go. So the, the reason that we're, that we're going for this expansion is that it's a, it's a bigger warehouse, so they need more parts. But they need more parts because there's a lot more different models of Subaru. There's seven more models of Subaru. There is electric models of Subaru. So they just have to stock a lot more different parts than they, than they do in the past. So it's not that we're going to put a lot more of the same parts in there. We're not going to add customers, but they have to stock a lot of the, a lot more parts in this, in this area. And I want to stop and say that this has been a good project for us. We've had, I think, 24 meetings, my weekly meetings, with ourselves, the architects, and we've been very fortunate to have John Gettbar in every one of the meetings. John is the current manager of the warehouse and he will be the manager after we, after we build this. And as far as, and John's really the one who, who helped us understand what needs to happen here and what's going to, what's going to go, what's going to go in. So basically, it's more of a variety of inventory that they need and because of that, they're only going to need about two more employees. It's not like we're doubling the amount of employees. They're doing the same operations, just they have to pull from a lot of different shelves. So it's not a big addition of employees. They just need more of a variety of materials in there. Some of the things that we did to make this project better, and as, let me talk a little bit about the overall proposed design, is the trucks will come in near Pleasant Street and then they will continue on and go to the same dots that they're using now for their deliveries. But when they leave the site, the trucks leaving the site will go from the new truck docks. So we won't have deliveries and shipping from the same truck docks. All deliveries will come this end of the building. All shipping will go on that end of the building, which will make a more efficient operation and we believe it will, it will, it will help with safety. The new, the new building is going to have racks that are not as tall, so inside of the building, it will be safer as far as the racks. And I want to tell you, as far as the operation, there'll be no batteries stored here, no tires and no sitting trucks. So we're not going to have any hazards, materials, any, any tires or certainly no, no batteries in the, in the. Hold on a second. This plan shows a little bit of a blow up as to what we're doing. As you can see, this, this driveway is going to stay where it is. There's currently two driveways that will be consolidated into one and then there's a driveway off of Pleasant Street that's going to be eliminated. There will be one driveway in this location that will remain, but it will be gated. So there will be not, this will not be used on a regular basis. So the, and, and the trucks will come in here. It's only trucking that comes in this driveway. All of the employees will park here or the other room sites. So we're able to separate the trucking operations and, and the parking. I'd like to talk to you about the utility design and mainly what we're doing with the, with the sewer water treatment. But the sewer, sewer line is going to exit the building in the back. It will go all the way around the building and then into a new manhole on Moore Street. There'll be a second smaller sewer line here to take here some bathrooms at this part of the building and that will also, that will go to an existing manhole on the site. Water line, we plan to connect to an existing water line, build a new water line and it will go out to and connect into the existing water line that comes off of, of Pleasant Street. We have hydrants shown on the plan in this location, this location, and there's another one in the front. So there's three proposed hydrants for the site. Let me talk about the treatment train for the, for the drainage, for the stormwater. We've designed contact treatment units that will treat one inch of the impervious rainfall from one inch of the pervious. We've also added three tree box filters in this location and this was more of an LID design that will allow water to be captured in a box which has mulch, filter media, perforated pipes that will allow the water to, and a tree that will allow the water, rather than all catch basins, to go into, into this, this area that will be, the water will be treated by infiltration rather than catch basin. We were asked to add that to the, to the, to the design and, and we were able to put that in the, in the area. There's a large geo-storage infiltration system that will infiltrate a lot of the water into the ground. And then there's going to be a rain garden in this area and the landscape architect will show you a lot more of the planting of the rain garden. But after the infiltration system, we go out to rain garden. Now, we are going to reconfigure and rebuild the rain garden, but the existing rain garden is 1,448 square feet. The new rain garden will be 3,346 square feet. So we're more than doubling the size of the rain garden that's there. We need to reconfigure it. We want to change the grading a little bit, but we are doubling the size of the rain garden. And then after, after it leaves the site, it goes out to the street in Pleasant Street and Moore Street, which it does right now, but we've substantially reduced the amount of flow going out to the street. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. We've designed the site to remove total suspended solids. The regulations require us to, to remove 80% TSS and we've removed 90%. So when we took it, when we took a look at the overall design for the drainage on the site, we wanted to accomplish a couple of things. We wanted to reduce the rate of flow that's going out to Moore Street and Pleasant Street. This is a rate of flow that goes into the town drainage system and we wanted to reduce it because we would reduce any possibility of flooding in the future. So rather than adding more to the town drainage system, we're reducing the rate to the town drainage system. And also, we wanted to infiltrate the stormwater on the site after it's treated. Again, it's better if rainwater that falls on the site stays on the site, goes into the groundwater. That's just a better design that I think should be done. So just as a, as a general idea, for the rates going out to Moore Street, we have, for the various storms, we've cut down the flow to Moore Street and Pleasant Street from a range of 84% reduction to a 40% reduction for the different sort, substantially reducing the amount going out to Moore Street. Now, as far as infiltration, for this type of soil on the site, the state stormwater rigs require us to recharge one quarter of inch of rainfall over the whole, over the whole site. This design infiltrates one and a half inches of rainfall over the entire site. So we're, we're infiltrating substantial amount more, six times as much infiltration that's required by the state. Now, it's a balancing exercise because if we want to reduce the amount of water that goes out to the street, the only way to accomplish that is to infiltrate more. But we've accomplished two good things, a substantial amount of infiltration on the site and, and reducing the flow out to, out to Moore Street. And in, on sheet, on, on my detail sheet, I have the, the tree box filter and just to give you a sense, what happens is that the water flows into this, it's basically a concrete box and inside that concrete box is mulch, a tree, and then there's two feet of, of filter material and then below the filter material, there'll be a perforated pipe and then after the perforated pipe, it, it leaves these tree box filters and goes into the infiltration system. So what that accomplishes is rather than have a typical catch basin where the water just goes through and then, then out to usually an infiltration system, this uses natural materials, soils, filter material, crushed stone to treat and infiltrate the water before it, before it leaves the site. So we have these tree box filters in this location near the, near the employee parking lot. The last thing I think I want to talk about is that we do have, we have erosion control around the whole site and this is a filter fabric, fabric with a compost sock. And before I turn it off over to Brendan to talk about the, the building itself, I do want to show that this is the area where the rain garden will be. It is in the corner of Moore Street and Pleasant Street where the rain garden is now. And as I said, we've, we've more than doubled the size of the existing rain garden to, to improve the situation. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Brendan Powers, who's going to talk about the architecture of the building. And then we're going to turn it over to Ali, who will talk about the landscape design.
All right. So I'll probably read. On the first sheet, site plan, A080, it was the existing warehouse facility through west, east, west access to Subaru. It's the one that cops off of to the west. I discussed 97, 94,000 square feet. At the end of the day, the goal is to make it look like it was all built and worked on. Same cladding, same cladding And also, as mentioned, we're providing at, at rack capacity, at dock capacity, supplemental office, toilet, shower, restroom. In addition, there's a stair that'll take you from ground floor to the mezzanine to the roof. Plan with cooperation or in cooperation with five fronts and it's five Friday access to both of them. Mezzanine level, storage mezzanine to the north, mechanical mezzanine to the south. Roof plan, A400. Not much to talk about here. Roof maintenance for five front and a photovoltaic zone to sort of keep the same percentage of solar energy as, as in the existing warehouse and maintain the same solar levels.
Could you say that again? I didn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the roof?
It's the roof plan and the blue area is a photovoltaic.
Is it what?
PV, solar.
Okay.
Solar panels. I apologize. I'll talk a little bit. So just some elevation so you know what it'll look like in the exterior. Same sort of grayish tundra, yellow metal panel. At the corner of Moore Street and Pleasant Streets, there's a sign that proposes to place this corner. Probably better viewed in this direction. Which is the rain garden, the building beyond Subaru's end of the corner. Calibrated to be under the 5% of the total elevation area. More views, same view of that corner and a view of the employee entrance, which you'll see from Moore Street. Which brings us into the plan.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
I have a question on the building?
Yes.
Before you move on. When the original building was built, you guys went for platinum lead certification. So I've been out of business for a few years. Is that still a thing? Are we still doing that?
Still a thing, but not a thing for the Still a thing, but not a thing for this particular project.
Not a thing for this particular project, okay.
I think there's the, the thresholds increased, the newer versions of the admitted construct. But I think we're carrying forward sort of the same attitude towards plumbing flow rates, HKC efficiency, the photovoltaic rates, just not good for the process of jumping to a lower level.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, before you leave.
Yes.
So you are going to match the building to the other one?
Mm-hmm.
And is there HVAC? We don't see it now. Is it?
It'll be very similar, so.
It's going to be hidden someplace where we don't see it?
You won't see it from the street, correct?
Okay.
They're not tall enough.
I was going to ask about the, the thing on the front. The roof, roof line is coming straight across the same? Or are we stepping up or down?
Straight across. We're going to keep the same vertical.
Okay. I'll, I'll figure out my notes and call you back. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more?
Oh, one more.
Sorry.
On the, on the leads, it's not platinum, but you're not going for the gold or the silver or anything different? No?
No.
Okay. And I noticed in the picture that the fence was gone. Is that, because obviously, it is quite different than having a parking lot there. Is that going to be open then with just plantings?
I'm sorry, Mr. Shan.
On, on.
Did you say the fence?
The big white fence.
The big white fence along.
Yes, yeah, and I should have, yes, I, I could have handled that. Right now, there is, there is a fence along, there's a white fence along Pleasant Street. And between Pleasant Street and the fence, there's a lot of plantings, and they're not going to be touched. Okay, so along, along that area, that, that, we're not moving the fence and all the plantings. And we'll have more plantings between Pleasant Street and that fence. But close to the corner, what we did, we, we ended the fence here. And then what we're building is a, is a metal fence, which is a decorative metal fence, which is what we have along Moore Street. So we wanted to match the look of that. So when you're looking at the site from this direction, you will see the plantings for the rain garden. And then beyond that, there'll be a, a metal fence here. And then the metal fence continues in this location near the parking lot. So you're going to see the metal fence and landscaping all the way along. And then metal fence in the back here too. And I think Ali can do a much better job than I can to explain how this is going.
I have a question for Matt.
Sure.
I may be wrong, but when I drive up Pleasant towards Byrd and I look in that last gate?
Yes, yeah.
There seems to be like a shed right there. It's like a pow-wash shed or whatever it was. I forget what the, I didn't see it on the plan. I don't.
There's a lot, the answer is there's a large building that's going to be knocked down.
Okay.
And I have that on my site plan, if I can find it really quickly. My stack here. But yes, there's a, there's a commercial building and, which I show in blue. And so there's the driveway you talked about.
Right, yes, that's what I'm talking about.
That's going to be knocked down.
That's gone.
That's going to be gone. Thank you.
Go on.
Okay.
I'll let him talk.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sarah, do you have another pen? My pen died. And I'm using a marker which is getting me high over here. Thank you. Okay.
Good afternoon, board members. Here to talk landscaping. So the existing building already has a great rain guarding and landscaping situation existing on the right side of the building. So with this expansion, all we're looking to do is expand that towards Moore Street and Pleasant Street. So you can see in the rendering, much nicer. For the, this is, this is an enlargement of the stormwater planting. Essentially, all we did here was stabilize the slopes with junipers and, junipers and other ground cover shrubs. And then on the inside, we have some water tolerant shrubs and grasses, ornamental grasses, all natives to Massachusetts, so nothing invasive. We did retain all the mature trees on site. There's no other trees proposed inside the stormwater, but we have proposed all the necessary trees for the parking lots in the street escape.
So is this the water garden that's there currently, or this is what it's going to be when you're done?
This is what's going to be there when we're done.
Okay, so can you show me where the current water, I'm on Pleasant and Morris?
Right at the corner. It's right at the corner.
So this is right at the corner?
Right.
Yeah.
This is Moore Street, this is Moore Street.
Right. So where is the current one? Don't we go out?
On the other side of the building, if I had it zoomed out.
No, you can do it on that one.
No, I think we're talking about two things. There is, there is a rain garden next to the building that, that we're going to eliminate. But I, I understand your.
Well, that's not called a rain garden where that birch is and that sunken thing, right?
Yeah. So this is.
Right there, right Sarah?
Yeah, yeah, that's all it is. So what we did was we were able to expand it kind of in a teardrop shape and really push it up this way.
So we're getting rid of the stuff on the corner, the birch and the?
No, not all.
No?
No, I just.
Giving the birch out?
Making it better and bigger and better.
Yeah, we did everything to keep the large trees there expanded. I will say that we are, we are planning to get rid of some of the small trees because we're showing an area of 20 feet from the back of the sidewalk to provide a site distance for trucks coming out. They need to be able to look down and see the intersection. So that area will be grassed, but the trees will remain. Correct me if I'm wrong. And, and then there's a, and then the total size of the rain garden is going to, is going to double.
Is there currently a sidewalk that runs up Morris?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they will remain.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Got some nice details there.
Before you move on from that one, one other quick one. So the current rain, are we talking about the current rain garden that was 1448? Now it's going to be 3346?
Uh, just a minute. Uh, yes.
Yeah, so that's what I'm looking at over here?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, in this diagram, we'll show, it's showing the tabulator of the bylaw requirements for the parking lot interiors. And we've exceeded the number required. We were required to provide 14 trees. We provided 15. There's also one that we're not counting. It's just closer to the entrance. But if, in case we need to do, there's 16. We're matching existing tree on site. That's the one outlined tree. There's a quantity of one of them that's not there. All the other ones are flowering dogwoods. That's to provide some seasonal interest. Everything else is low evergreen. And then this is the, this is the shot of the existing conditions on site right now. There's a white fence. And then in the bottom right corner is the, the same rain garden that's on the other side of the plant right now. So we just matched the plant material from this side, so it's an extension of.
Okay, Sarah, would you mind going back to that particular? No. To the left, give me that one over there. Yeah. So that is here?
Edge of the existing warehouse, and then.
So we're adding on to that warehouse and going into the parking lot?
Yes.
Taking over the parking lot.
And at what, is the height of that the same height as the new building? Which is?
Forty feet.
Forty? Okay. And would you say that that tree that's right there on the corner is 30 feet or 25? No, that one, that, that one.
That can be a little bit misleading as it's further.
I, I guess, a minute. I'm not going to hold you to it.
I'd say that's probably 25.
Okay, I just, there'll be a, there'll be a follow-up question on that somewhere. Okay.
He's feeling nervous, Sarah.
I know.
Twenty, I said 25. Twenty and five. I, you can't, I don't know.
I know, no, it's okay, it's okay. We're not even talking about, that's a 40-foot building with a 25-foot tree in front of it. About. Okay, all right. Next. No, I have, I'm going to make, hopefully make a point.
If we could actually, could you, could you scroll to, can we look at that picture again, Sarah? Just real quick. So you, there's, there's, that's the black metal fence I'm talking about. So that's going to be extended. And so you'll see that along Moore Street, and you'll also see that behind the rain garden.
So it's going to be a black metal fence. We're not doing any chain link or anything like that, right?
No, that's what you're like.
Just checking. I got that one question.
It's the same thing that's up there now. And rather than having the white plastic fence behind the rain garden, you will see that black metal fence.
I like that. Okay. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
That's not it, is it?
Who drew the, the renderings? Is that your office? I, just as somebody who asks to look at plans all day, I really appreciated that all the cars on our lot are Subarus.
Remember I said, remember I said we had 24 meetings in this? That was discussed. And, and the trucks also.
As opposed to what? What, where they put a Ford in the Subaru?
Well, I'm just saying.
No, it, it.
Usually they're nondescript cars.
Yes, no, we, we're all Subaru. Oh, yeah.
I know, but why, okay.
We all, I own one, we all own one. He owns two, three.
That's because.
Like your father, we'd have a rambling Nash up there. Right?
Because they're made with love.
Going back in time now.
Okay, Sarah just showing us pretty pictures for fun, or are you?
These are, these will be the plant materials. These are reference images in case you had a question about any of the plant materials. There's imagery.
Okay. I have a, are we ready to move on to the next question? Do you have more, or do you want?
That concludes the presentation.
Okay. My board, anyway? Go ahead, Brian.
It's not landscaping related, though. Can anybody describe what differences there can be in that curb cut? That's right now where the gate is, like, to go into that open lot? Is it going to be the same basic curb cut, or is it going to be a lot wider?
It's, it will be a lot wider.
Yep.
But here's, and it's in a little bit of a different location.
This is the one on Morris, right?
Yes.
Right, right after the insert.
Yep, and let me find my, okay, here's a good one.
And that'll, that'll be gated, right? That's going to be like?
Well, actually, this one, this one is not going to get, let me get you oriented. Okay, so this, this driveway is going to stay, stay the same.
Yep.
This driveway is that driveway.
Yep.
So that's going to stay the same.
The one further.
Now, there's another, there's two driveways here. And they'll both be, this will be eliminated.
Yep.
This will be, will be rebuilt. But as you can see, there's, there's a much wider mouth. And we, we did a lot of work to, to do the truck turning radiuses and the auto turns to make sure that as these trucks circulate through this site, they will not cross the center line at all. So we, we made this wide, wide enough, and the turn's wide enough that if you're making a left-hand turn, you don't have to, you don't have to cut across the center line. Same thing about right, you don't have to cut across. So it will be a bit wider, but it will be consolidated. Rather than two curb cuts, there'll be one.
And the primary, they'd be mostly going down the hill to Route 1, right?
Yes, well, yes, it's, it's uphill to Route 1, but everything.
Nobody's going up into town.
No, this is, yeah, this is a right turn only up to Route 1. And that's, our proposal, we'd be happy to have that as a.
And I'm just curious, is the traffic like, like big tractor trailers, or is it more like the smaller?
Eighteen-wheelers.
Oh, yeah, big, big ones, yep.
There'll be a sign on the plan to say no left turn.
Yep, okay.
And we have signage that, that also says.
Okay, thank you.
No left turn, right turn.
Mr. Shan?
On that, on that turret, you were showing us how they would come in that way. They can go, come in or go out that particular entrance?
Yes, all trucks will be by this entrance. Nothing here, nothing here, nothing where the employees are, nothing where the cars are. They come in here, and then they continue on to the, where they make the deliveries. But then when they leave, they leave that way, same thing. They come in here and for, I'm sorry, D, yeah, delivery to the building. And then the shipping comes out this way. So all truck traffic will be from that one.
And they, they always did, they did, where it is now, just the one that's there, actually built now, you didn't continue on this way? It always, you always went out the same way? Okay.
That's, yes, yes, yeah.
And I notice it looks a little deeper there where they would back the trucks in on the new one. Is that?
It is. We made it bigger, we made it bigger, safer, easier to circle.
Yeah, I was wondering if there was any trouble with the big trucks getting in and out of that one? A little tight?
Um, no, we, we, we gave it a lot of, a lot of thought. They, they will be able to pull up here and then get in, yeah, they will be able to make it. I didn't mention we.
No, I know, I know on that one, obviously, it's larger. I was just wondering if you ever had any problems on, on what is already built?
Oh, the existing? No, they've been able to maneuver there, Mike. Is that correct? Yeah, they've, they've, they've been able to fix over. So the proposed is bigger, but they had no problem with the existing.
Just from that here, the, the trucks that all go into the current loading dock. And so now with the new addition, the new trucks, the trucks dropping off the parts, deliveries, are usually 18, 53 footers or 18 mils. They're only going to go through the first dock. The second dock that we currently have today only has 28 footers in it. And so that'll just be taking parts going up to the 65 doors. So the, the large trucks are just going to the first dock. They're not going to go any further in. And so it'll be two receiving and shipping.
And I just have one more question. It's more to the business. I know that we've, this used to be, or it was planned to be a parking lot. It is. You only use it for a few things. And of course, down at 83, is it 83 Morris or whatever?
Eighty-four Morris.
Eighty-four, okay. Yeah, and I guess it never really materialized because there was a change in the business. Could you explain that? I'm just wondering. I know that years ago, long time ago, you, you, before you, before you had all these cars in town, you talked, I think they talked about when you went into and purchased a car, well, if you want a green one, it might take a couple of weeks or a month, and, and people were happy with that. And then it became that we wanted to have all these cars available so that if someone said, I want a green one, you get a green one very, very quickly, or whatever color. And has, has, what's changed since that time?
On the parking lot at 95 Morris Street, we had rented that out to New Car. Bernie had owned it years ago. It was called Bark. And now Bernie sold it, it's called New Car. And we were renting the facility to New Car. And then I was, I was helping work with New Car. And then we got 84 Moore Street in front of this board approved for five, 600 parking spaces. So they no longer needed it, and so they've given it back to us. And so for their needs, they're down in Dean for Moore Street. And on Moore Street, they have additional parking. And we're taking it back. And we don't have any retail stores besides the Ferrari and Mazda Rati. And so we're taking it back for the distributor. And so now, it's just set in their bank, and you might have saw some trucks there. We're, we're letting, we're factory neutral park some things there for a couple of months while they were about building. And so the new cars have run away in that business. And so we're taking it back as a distributorship. And just, we don't need it, but we need it for the addition right now. So the new cars are down at 84. They'd also rent out the parking lot for Joel Ham on Dean Street, behind Lapping's Auto Parts, or Advanced Auto Parts now. So that's not part of our business. So what's changed is we're not in the retail business anymore. And we don't rent it to New Car because they were renting it for a while, but we're not renting anymore.
Okay, I was just curious if it was, if it was an overall thing in the, in the car business in Norwood? Or as you explained, so I guess it's, it hasn't been a great change. I, I know that since COVID, they didn't have any inventory. What, I needed a car.
No, they're, they're building the inventory back up, but it's still, it's still light.
Okay, thank you.
I had just more of a curiosity about the warehousing. If you had any sort of automation, or if it was just old, old-fashioned pork truck and, and pallet moving and?
With, with, they come down, we've got these BLMs. They're about 35 feet high, and those are all automated. You put in what you order, it's all the little parts, nuts, bolts, any little, they're all in drawers. It's amazing. It's a, in Canada, you see when they're made. And they'd be a man of like 35 feet tall, I think. How does it balance the parts? And I'm here to stop out. I'd love to show you. That's automation that we do have there.
Yeah, very interesting.
Very cool. Very, very, very good system.
Thanks.
How close is the new loading dock to the neighbors? To the, see where the yellow thing comes out, and you got a little green there?
Sure. It, there, there's an existing wall.
How high is the wall?
It's very tall. It's about 20 feet. But there's an existing wall that I show here.
Mm-hmm.
And that is gonna, that's going to stay. So we're not pushing any closer to the neighbors. But just so you know, the, the, there's no residential neighbors near here.
They're not right in the back, but aren't they over on that corner circular lot? So go to your, my left, right there, where your finger?
There are, well, there's, there's a couple along Pleasant Street. Here, number 830, and then there's another one in the back. So we're not, we're not changing it, but right now, in this location. I'm giving the scale correct.
The direct house next to us, we own that house we rented out.
So it is, the house is only 20 feet from the, from, from the wall, but we're not moving the wall.
That's the one you own?
It's existing, there's an existing fence up there for safety.
Okay, but we're leaving that fence that's there, that wall that's there behind where the loading dock is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, trucks are going to go out and in. It's, it's going to be your problem, but they can pass each other on that?
Yes, we, we spent a lot of time making sure that they can pass each other without crossing.
Okay, again.
It was very important to us.
And that's your problem, not ours?
Yes, yeah. No, it was very important to us.
Okay, can I go back to landscaping? Can you give me the side of the building, Sarah, the new side of the building? So where were? I think it's upside down. My landscaping. My landscaping guy, how much does the, I know you've, you've doubled the amount of water that you're going to allow off the site. You've doubled it by keeping it in, right?
Well, we decreased the amount leaving the site by a decrease of between eighty percent to forty percent, depending on.
And you did that by making these?
Very large infiltration systems that will make the water go into the ground rather than off the site.
With the trees and the dirt, and then the, right?
Yes, well, the combination of the different components.
Okay.
The trees and the infiltrate in the.
Been trying to sell this for twenty years, this would be a good idea, okay.
No, it's, yes, yes.
So, can we, that one. My question is with the side of the building. Can you get me that one, Sarah? Is that, that one? I know Mike's gonna do great stuff. But as I'm looking at the current building and I go by, I look at the lovely corner of Morrison Pleasant, and it's very lush and it's very pretty. We don't care what you do behind there, we, we drive by this to go to the store. And I look at the little trees in front of that big giant building, which is lovely, but they don't look right to me. And what are they, dogwoods? Flowering dogwoods?
Those ones are dogwoods, yes.
So a dogwood averages twenty-five feet?
Twenty-five to thirty, yeah.
In their lifetime?
Yes.
And you've got a forty-foot building with a little short tree. It kind of looks like those little shrubs that people make into tables in front of a three-story. Would there be some way we could get a nice deciduous oak, or maple, or something that's going to, I'll be dead, okay? But something that's.
You don't wanna die, you don't die in a storm.
Something that's gonna at least get to thirty feet in front of a forty-five-foot building. Because those dogwoods are lovely, but they're dirty, and they only are pretty for a month. And they're never gonna get over twenty-five feet. And you're putting it in front of a forty-five-foot building, which is going to be lovely, with the very live Subaru signs on both sides, which will look fine.
If I, if I could just say a little bit about what our concept was, is, yes, it's twenty-five feet versus a forty-foot building, but this is an industrial building that's forty feet tall. You're not gonna be able to hide it.
Well, we're not trying to hide it, we're just trying to soften it a little bit.
And, and I was the one that advocated these type of trees, like a, like a flowering dogwood type of tree, or a pear tree, that would, that would look nice, that would have some appeal to it at first.
Some pizzazz for the one month that we get it. I get that.
Exactly, just to give it a little bit of, little bit of pop. And, and so, I mean, that, we did discuss that, so that, that came a lit, a bit for me, is, is what I thought the board may like to see. So as far as the height, yeah, you might be able to make it a little bit higher, but a twenty-five-foot tree with a forty-foot building, it is, it is an industrial building, it's rather large. I think what we've done here to soften it, and it's not only just up against the building, but all the other trees along the, the roadway. If you, if you could put up the, the site plan that shows all the plantings that we have along Morris Street and. Yep, that's, okay, sure. So yes, the, the trees are gonna be kind of small against the building, but you see all the, the street trees that we have along Morris, and that's gonna also provide a screen, because the building is gonna be much farther behind, and the trees are gonna be closer to the, to the street. So I think the combination of.
In all due respect, it doesn't do any kind of screen. They're pretty, they're fine, it's just.
Sorry, what doesn't do anything?
Those ones that are along the street in front of the building. It's a big industrial building.
No, I'm sorry, I will say what I was getting at.
Matt and I just left that.
Maybe it wasn't clear, but there's a, there's a number of street trees that are gonna be right here.
Okay.
Okay, again, I, I hear what you're saying with, with these, but because we have all of these street trees, that's gonna provide a lot of screening in the building. And this is more, I thought, more along, along the parking lot to show some ornamentation along, along the parking lot. So that's what we were getting at. It's not just one set of trees.
That's not where I'm looking at them. I'm looking at where we're coming down Pleasant Street, and we're looking at the side of the building. Which, again, it's an industrial building, it's, it is what it is, it's lovely. And I just thought that something that went thirty to forty feet.
Can we, can we go ahead and agree that on that side, on that Pleasant Street, that, but tonight we're not gonna make a decision, but I will go out with you, and we'll walk it with Matt, and we'll find out the right trees that should go on that street, and so we don't get held up on a few trees on Pleasant Street.
You got a deal.
And, we're right, you and I and Matt will figure out the trees that will go on that.
With approval, as long as you, you pick the tree up at night, on the Pleasant Street side.
Okay.
So that, if I can, a condition of approval might look something like, subject to replacement of four flowering dogwoods on Pleasant side of the property with something.
Possible replacement, possible.
At thirty, that max, that reaches a maximum height of thirty to forty feet?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out how.
How about we, how about we, how about we, that the applicant, similar to Matt, will walk with. Chair lady will come up with a resolution together.
That's a little squishy for.
I think she's not gonna make her hand any squishy.
Yeah, she's, she's not squishy.
We've already got twenty-five-foot trees, they're not gonna go, they're not gonna go up. Twenty-five foot now, they're only gonna go up. Already.
I think to what you said, but it's a possible replacement.
Yeah.
Because they may, may end up staying with what you got. And may be the best scenario.
I mean, is that?
Possible replacement.
Possible replacement of.
Possible replacement. You gotta, you may decide that what, what, what they've suggested is the best.
How, when, when did we, when did Subaru do that parking lot? What year was that?
Fifteen years ago.
Yeah, it was a little few years back.
Okay, and initially, we weren't getting that pretty little garden on the corner.
We walked it.
That's exactly what, that's my point.
Figured it out.
Right, we figured it out.
Four trees.
Okay, so, we figured it out, but you weren't, because you looked at it, and Mike came up with a beautiful idea with the birch there, and the drainage, and all that good stuff, okay, so.
We can walk it again.
I'm okay with that, Sarah's, Sarah's, Sarah's not liking it. You okay with it?
It's your decision.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
I think we'd be fine if we.
Well, I, why do you make a motion? No, we'll, we'll talk about it at the end of the, at the end of the hearing.
Okay, we'll put it in the decision. Do we have any, are you done? I'm sorry, I probably cut you off, no?
No, you're good.
Okay. Anybody from the board have questions? Do you have any questions?
I, um, talk more about planting, being as there's more plants for the pollinators. Is there?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. All the plants that we specified in the rain garden are all natives. They're flowering, the ITOs are flowering, they're pollinators, the panacums are grasses. It's a, it's a pretty good selection of plants, so it'll create a nice biohabitat in the rain garden, for sure.
Do you know how many square feet of planting you've got, because you've done more than you needed to? Would you give me those numbers?
Yeah, well, for the requirements, yeah, I can, I can tell you.
Yeah, but it's more of a count than square footage, but he has a count right here.
So what's required and what you're doing?
Yep, yes, he has it.
For all of us, the TV viewing audience loves to hear that stuff.
And he can refer you to the plan where it's written.
Well, I have it on this very copious plan, but I can't.
Go to all five, there's a tabulator at the top of it.
Yep. Just give me the overall, we were supposed to have what, and now we've got by.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nope, can you read that?
So for the tree requirements along Morris Street, that's a street planting requirement, an average of forty linear feet, and that's the average requirement. We have one hundred and forty linear feet, and so that works out to about three and a half, so we're providing four trees. And so we've met that requirement. And then for the, for the parking lot, we were required fifteen trees, we're proposing fifteen trees as well, not including the additional flowering tree. And then square footage, fifty, or five percent of the interior lots. We have ten thousand, ten thousand eight hundred thirty square feet of interior parking lot. Five percent of that works out to five hundred forty-two feet, and we're.
Five percent is what they have to have in the parking lot? Okay, and you're doing how much percent? Five percent?
Yes, five hundred forty-six square feet. That is not including the additional planting that we provided along the slope of.
What, what is a linear foot when you're talking about trees? What does that mean?
No, this is part of the requirement, you need.
For each, for each street, for the length of street, you need a certain amount of trees per the length of street. So that's where he's getting at for the linear foot.
Oh, okay.
So if the street's a certain length, you need a certain.
All right, do we ever use that before?
Forty feet, and so, you do the math.
All right, not me.
Oh, that diagram shows the.
Yeah, even with a magnifying glass, I can't read these. Okay, anybody else have any questions on the board? Ernie?
Nope.
Brian?
Nope.
Joe?
Nope. Nope.
Okay, okay, what's our?
Anyone in the public? Public hearing, Madam Chair.
She's with, you're with the school?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, anybody, there's nobody in, there's nobody here. Is there anybody online? Stephanie?
They are both with you.
They're both with you, okay. Jeffrey, with you also?
Gary.
Yes?
Yep, there's nobody online.
Nobody online, okay. All right, what is the pleasure of the board?
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any more deliberations from anybody? I have a question. Where are all the batteries stored?
New Jersey Subaru of America stores all the batteries. They ship them directly to dealers. We don't wanna get involved in that.
Okay, just wondering. No questions? Okay, public hearing's closed. I can't ask any more questions. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the condition that the applicant, the engineer, and the chairperson discuss possible change of some trees in front of the building.
Second.
There's a special permit and a site plan review, so I do recommend separate vote for each review, subject to the same set of conditions if that's the wish of the board.
All right, that should be, that would be site plan.
That's site plan.
Right, the trees.
No, there'd be appropriate conditions.
So this would be for the app, this would be for the major special permit.
So the motion has amended, I have a second.
And we don't have anything we're attaching to that? Are the signs in this, Sarah?
Yeah, so with a major project special permit, all the different types of relief that might be required by a particular project are consolidated and streamlined into the same review. Were this not to be a major project special permit, it would require relief from the section of the bylaw on signage, which would limit this project to only one wall sign, that would not exceed more than fifty square feet. Both of the wall signs that I've proposed do significantly exceed that area for signage. But again, because it's a major project special permit, all of that can be consolidated into one approval, just for the, the major project special.
Okay, so, do we want to discuss the signs? Is everybody comfortable with that? I am comfortable with it because the building is so huge. If they went with the sign that they were allowed, it would look like a pinpoint. It would look kind of like those little twenty-five-foot trees.
No concerns about the signs.
Anybody, question? Everybody good with that? How much bigger are they, Sarah? I mean, they're substantially bigger?
Forty-seven by four and a half.
Sarah, isn't the regulation five percent of the size of this facade?
Yes, but you're still limited to only one sign, one wall sign.
Okay, all right, so the size, the size is not fifty square feet, it's five percent of the facade, and we're smaller than five percent of the facade. But I wanted, but you mentioned that you eliminated to, you're, you're limited to one wall sign, but that's supposed to be, you can have a wall sign for, for each tenant. So if we had ten tenants in the building, we could have ten wall signs, as long as they weren't too big. So we only have one tenant in the building, so we want to do two, actually, three wall signs. Sarah, did I get that right?
Yeah, I think that's accurate.
The third one's in the back, right?
The five percent of the facade would be further divided if you have multiple tenants, so it's five percent of the portion of the facade that belongs to each respective tenant.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, the building is so big, I think you, yeah.
Six, one might have dozen the other.
But we're talking two, and then one on the back?
One in the back, yeah.
And there's one on the other side? There's one on the.
And then there's one, one in the.
On the original building.
There is a.
There is no Subaru sign?
There's a tower there, so.
Yeah, there's a, in the front, there's a monument.
All right, so the board's okay with just putting the signs in? Joe?
I just had a question. I, I think it's fine. I just, it, do they have to request a waiver? Are we okay going this way?
You would just approve the special permit predicated on the plans asked for.
Which was the motion?
You're making a motion on the special permit, Ernie?
What's that?
You're making a motion on the special.
I made the motion, and I think Brian seconded it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous on the special permit. And now we are voting on. Somebody has to make a motion, I can't do it.
Um, so Madam Chair, I'd move that the site plan be approved with standard conditions. There's no more language to this one, I believe. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. I also want, I did mention before, that we had meetings with town department heads organized by Sarah. We've met with them onsite in meetings, and that made this project go a lot smoother, and we appreciate the help that we received from the town.
And, and they do a great job, and I appreciate that, but we don't know any of that, the five of us. All we get is this, these pieces of paper, okay, which are very detailed and perfectly done. But we don't get any of that, and then we have to vote on it.
You get a memo.
Right.
That has, that recaps the meeting.
I understand that, but they've had multiple meetings, and we get a package. So if I belabor the point, Ernie, it's because.
No, it's fine. I, I didn't think you, I thought you said you didn't get any information about that meeting.
We get all of, they have twenty meetings, and we get a package.
But everything, everybody was great. I don't wanna leave anybody out, but Noah Light was great, Noah Fire was fantastic. They met on the site two or three times. Sarah was excellent, Mark's engineering department. And you would think that, you know, listen, and have a good discussion, and came up with a good answer, so thank you.
Thank you. No, I just, we're not gonna discuss it, then why?
If we're not gonna ask the applicant any questions?
We did, I know, I know, and there's something laying on going on about that. Okay.
Madam Chair, Lady, board members, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
We sat down multiple appointments with the fire and the building inspector, they were fantastic to work with. And in this particular building, just if you look at the plans on the offices, which are very limited offices there, we just had a fire ladder going up, and we have a full set of stairs right now, which was represented, requested by the fire department, which we're really glad that we did. They were fantastic to work with.
Thought you thought, thought you thought you were gonna get a letter?
Yeah, you got a letter. They wrote a letter. We'd like to see everybody, we have the grand opening. We have the groundbreaking, we have a groundbreaking, we'll have a grand opening, hope to everyone out there.
When is it, when are you gonna break ground?
We're very excited to get through tonight, so that we get a plan that, so you will, we'll let the board know.
We're out to bid.
Yeah, we're up to bid now.
And, yeah, and I know we're talking too much, we're supposed to get out of here after we get a vote, but all these, all these, this is fully designed. We didn't come with you with a, okay, we don't, a box, we don't know what's gonna happen. All the architecture is done, the site plan's done, the site plan is out to bid, we have three contractors.
Three contractors, just to say right now.
Okay, have at it, gentlemen, thank you.
We'll talk to you soon about some trees. We'll talk to you soon about some trees.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, hopefully, no school, madam?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have a presentation for you, because I think we kind of reviewed everything. Last time, I know we received a memo about plantings, and the only update I can offer for that is some of them are already installed, because we did start late sleeping, but a majority of the ones that were noted in that memo are not installed, in those areas that go around where the walking path is that everyone's been talking about, and then some of them are over by the generator, and a lot of them are along the buffer between Washington Street and the field, which hasn't even been installed yet. So that's backed with the landscape designer, and they will review that, and then it'll go through the same process as all the other changes. We'll get a proposal request, the contractor will price it, and we'll bring it to the building committee for review and approval. So I don't know if you have any other questions?
Um, all right. I talked to Mr. Slater today, and just to clarify about, is there anything else? Because I've gone up a couple of times, I don't know what the heck I'm looking at up there. I don't, it's...
It's a construction site.
It's a giant construction site.
Give it a week, and the fence will come down, and then it will not fall.
Okay, um, the board questions? So we're waiting on landscaping and the walking path.
Yes, and then the, the other thing that I can send, I talked to Sarah earlier, I can send the plans for, is the play space in front of the building, so we have like a formal design on that. I can send you the sketches for, it's a basketball, a half basketball court, some sensory areas, raised garden beds, and some cover over the existing seating area, so...
And that we're waiting on?
We had talked about it before, and I might have sent you the renderings of it, but I have the formal, like actual drawings that I can send to you from the architect.
Okay. Any, any questions?
Was there a recommendation on this? Is this something we were waiting on things to add, or?
Well, we're still, we're so waiting...
Is there actually anything to write, or how is this going?
I'm, I'm comfortable continuing until the July 28th, so we can get, the walking path seems to be a kind of sticking point with DPW and the other committee. I've heard from them.
Yes, so I was gonna, so the, what's happening now with that is we are supposed to be getting updated design this week, and then my colleague is trying to set up a meeting for next week with the town departments again to review that. So I think best case, it will go through the process, and we'll have an answer at the August building committee meeting, which is the second Monday in August, August 11th. I think that's best case, so if, if you're going to wait on that to continue, I would rather we push it till after that meeting, because I don't think I'll have an answer for you in July.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
By continuing this, are we holding up anything?
No.
Okay. This is just the formality of getting the plans correct?
Yes, that, that's my understanding, yeah.
We're not holding up any construction, we're not delaying any, anything?
No, everything's still moving forward, it's...
Okay, fine, thank you.
A lot of it's actually already done, so it's hard to change it now.
Okay.
Yes.
When is our August meeting?
So, we have one on August 11th and one on August 25th, so the, if the idea is to wait until after the middle school building committee meets in August, which it sounds like is on the same night, then you'd have to push it to the 25th. In fairness, I did check in with the building commissioner about continuing this...
Yeah.
Until later, because I had that exact same question, is this holding anything up? And he said absolutely not, but that's when we were talking about, July 28th. In fairness, I haven't talked to him about August 25th. That's like a week before school starts, so that is going a little bit close.
I mean, we can schedule it for the 28th, and then if it doesn't happen, we can, I don't know.
I think I'd be most comfortable.
If I have to come here and continue it, or if we can just continue.
If we don't have the information, I mean, obviously, this is out of the will of the board, but you could enter a request to further continue, would not have to attend.
Okay.
Just write a letter saying I would like to continue to August.
I think I might recommend that, just to give us the ability to potentially approve this.
Yeah, because it's, it's a couple of things, you know, are they going to put a wall for the walk, so...
Yeah, it's, again, it's all still being discussed.
So we, I agree with Sarah, that August seems a little close, I mean...
Oh, so the, the thing, the work wouldn't happen until after the football season anyways, like nothing for that would even begin, like it's not something that would be constructed over the summer.
We're not going to not get a COD, you know, occupancy permanent, COA.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to affect school opening, it's not...
So it doesn't matter, so we can say, continue until, I can't make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we continue to July 28th at 7:00 at the senior center.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I would be okay if she didn't have to come, if we get the paperwork.
She could just send a letter.
Yeah, I'll know in early...
You guys, everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. The comp plan update, that's, that's you, Sarah, correct?
Do you want to take it, or?
No, thank you.
Just a real brief update on the comp plan. We wrapped up phase two of the plan this past month. Phase two was all about community engagement, as you know, kind of canvassing the community and getting a lot of different points of feedback and input on people's ideas for what they wanted to preserve, and areas they wanted to grow for the future. So our consultants have been hard at work for the last few weeks, kind of compiling all of that data. The comp plan steering committee is meeting next week to begin translating all of that into a vision and goals, and actually starting to write the document, transitioning from collecting information to putting it all together. So it's exciting, we are just over our goal for participation. We're at like 52% of our goal for participation points, so engagement was a little slow in phase two, but we extended it by a couple of months, and it did end up picking up speed, so that's the real quick, quick update, but we, we should have a, you know, draft of division A and the goals and those core themes within the next month or so.
All right. Ready, good? All right, minutes?
I think somebody wants to make a motion to approve? Minutes of...
Four to 14.
April 14, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Brian seconded.
Aye, I didn't do anything.
Unanimous?
Yeah.
I only have one quick question. Do we have the schedule? I only have on my calendar the schedule through like September, I think.
Um, I can't...
But we have done that? Okay, all right, I'll, I'll take that from you, okay? Motion, oh, I can't make the motion. Motion to adjourn, would you like to make that?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Aight.